And there are blessings of Alzheimer's. You learn to write and speak from the heart. And we're all raised to speak from the mind. Well, my mind used to be my best friend. And I don't see-
Let's get started. Welcome to the special meeting, the L.A. City Council Special Joint Meeting, Budget and Finance and the Public Works and Gain Reduction Committee. Today is Monday, June 1st. I'd like to welcome all of our viewers on Channel 35. Thanks to the Channel 35 team for broadcasting live and those viewing online. Today, we are here to kick off a discussion on the best way to correct a failed policy from 40 years ago. For those who don't know the history, in the early 1970s, the city council passed an ordinance that changed the municipal code by one sentence. And that sentence made the city responsible for repairing all sidewalks damaged by roots of the trees. It only took two years for a large backlog of repairs to develop. And if you look around today, it's clear to see that backlog has grown. And last August, myself and Mr. Kocorian and our committees convened in joint session and requested our city administrative officer report on recommendations for a comprehensive and sustainable sidewalk repair policy. And today, we're going to hear that report. This is just the first step of the process. This is day one. This is kind of our first day of school as it relates to coming with this comprehensive sidewalk repair program. And just to let you know, no action will be taken today. Mr. Kocorian and I will be arranging a series of meetings around the city to hear feedback from residents, businesses, owners, business owners and neighborhood council leaders. And I want to thank Mr. Kocorian and his committee and Mr. Sardio, Mr. Price for diving into this citywide issue. This has not been touched in 40 years. And as we all know, through the actions of this council on the agreement we made, the settlement that we made, the city is on the hook for $31 million over the course of the next 30 years. And it's incumbent upon ourselves to craft policy to ensure that we get the best bang for our buck in that $31 million and to fix as many sidewalks as possible. And I'm working to, committed to working with you, Mr. Kocorian, and all of my colleagues here to create a policy that's transparent, that's effective, and that's user-friendly. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chairman of Budget and Finance Committee, Mr. Kocorian, for some opening remarks, then we'll get the report from Mr. Santana. Mr. Kocorian.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Buzcaino. It's such a pleasure for me and I think all of the members of the Budget and Finance Committee to work with you and your committee on an issue that is top of mind for most people as they walk around the city. And I think in most of our neighborhoods, most of our districts, there are horror stories about the conditions of the sidewalks. And I think it's important to take a couple steps back and to realize that, first of all, Los Angeles has the largest system of sidewalks of any city in America. We have over 10,000 miles of sidewalks. And many of those were built out during the city's rapid growth in the years immediately following World War II. And obviously, a lot of those sidewalks are now 50, 60, even 70 years old and are getting to end of life under the best of circumstances. When you compound the fact that many of the tree planting decisions that were made by various developers and various homeowners and in some cases neighborhoods and even the city itself over those years, many of those tree choices were poor choices. And as those trees came to maturity, they caused a great deal of damage to our sidewalks. And as Mr. Buzcaino pointed out, there was a change in direction during the Nixon administration, which completely changed 60 years of experience that this city had had, in which the adjacent property owner had full responsibility under state law for repairing those sidewalks. And that was the practice in this city and in every other city in California for 60 years. But when the federal government during the Nixon administration dangled a little bit of grant funding before the city, we decided to go ahead and predecessor council made the decision to go ahead and adopt that tree root exception and take on the responsibility for tree root caused damage. Sadly, the grant funding didn't last, but the tree roots did. And so, as that program ran out of money, sidewalks continued to fall into worse and worse repair. And our sidewalks became less and less accessible for our elderly, for our disabled community, and they became less useful as we've tried to advance to make our communities more walkable and more friendly to active modes of transportation. So this is a problem that has festered literally for generations. And we are now at a point, a historic moment, I think, when a combination of factors, including the resolution of the Willetts lawsuit and improving economy and the resolute determination, I think, of this council to fix this problem, gives us an opportunity to embark upon a path over the next couple of decades to ensure that every city, every sidewalk in the city of Los Angeles will be in good repair. And we will have a policy that will be sustainable, that will maintain those sidewalks in good repair, and will address all of the other policy issues that relate to embarking upon that path. I think it is important to note, Mr. Buzcaino, that we have before us a report by the CIO, which we'll be hearing in a moment. And I'm sure members are going to have many questions directed to the CIO about that report, just as the public has and as the media has over the course of the last few days. It's important to note that the CIO's report is just a touchstone for the beginning of a discussion. The CIO doesn't, with all due respect to our CIO, the CIO doesn't make decisions about city policy. This council does, and the mayor does, working together. And the report that we have before us includes some suggestions. We may decide to accept those suggestions, or we might decide to embark upon an entirely different path. That's going to be a decision made by this council over the course of the next several months, as we have this continuing dialogue among ourselves and with the public. And I'm looking forward to working with you, Mr. Chairman, on that dialogue. I really think we have an opportunity here to produce a policy that will benefit generations of Angelenos still to come, if we do this right, and I'm confident that we will.
Thank you, Mr. Kocorian. And for those joining us here at John Farrar Council Chambers, please be reminded to fill out a speaker card if you want to speak on this item. And you can get it over to one of our sergeants here standing on the sides. With that, I'd like to bring up Mr. Santana and ask that he walk us through the various components of the report and the program in general and the recommendations in the CIO's report that would lead to implementation of each of the components that's presented before us. Thank you to you, Mr. Santana, and your entire team. Very impressive and comprehensive report, and I really appreciate your effort.
Good afternoon. Miguel Santana, City Administrative Officer for the City of Los Angeles. Just to put this report in context, once the city completed negotiations with the plaintiffs in the Willetts case, you directed this office to work with a team of folks, many of whom are sitting behind me, to establish a policy around this work. If you recall, the Willetts case provides a framework for how we're going to begin to tackle this enormous task. But it provides flexibility for your council to make a decision on the policy issues. And as you indicated, Mr. Kocorian, these are a series of recommendations. We anticipate there'll be a lot of dialogue and discussion in relation to these recommendations, and that there would be changes, not just from this generation of council members, but from future generation of council members. This is, the Willetts case was settled to provide the city flexibility over the next 30 years, so that as the needs change throughout the years, the council of that time could go ahead and best respond to those needs. But it does ensure that the city is going to be committed to having a program that's supported by a real financial commitment. So in true CIO style, we do have a PowerPoint presentation. Hopefully, you all have copies, and we also provided them to the public, starting off with the first page, where we talk about what were the, the framework that we used for, to reach this conclusion or these series of conclusions. The most important thing that you shared with us in terms of the direction was that you want to make sure that we're not back here again in 20, 30 years, that the decisions that your generation of council members are making will ensure that the policy goals established are ongoing and permanent. So it would not be a success if that in 30 years from now, their sidewalks continue to be in disrepair. And so you wanted to make sure that we're back in a place that is sustainable. You've also directed that we be consistent with the Willetts settlement. The Willetts settlement, as I indicated, provides a framework to, that guides the city over the next 30 years, but in that also provides flexibility so that you and other generations of council leaders can make choices and decisions to best respond to the community. You want to ensure that we maximize these efforts to ensure greatest amount of accessibility. And so our advice to you does every effort to do that in a way that's reasonable while at the same time clear. And then we also provide a recommendation that to maximize the investment being made by taxpayers, that we share the responsibility for the ongoing maintenance and repair with adjacent property owners. Next slide. At the very core, we have two different approaches that we're recommending. The first one we call fix and release, and the second is consistent with a practice that exists throughout this state, in fact, throughout the country. What we're proposing, as what was stated earlier, state law is very clear on this matter. The sidewalks are the responsibility of the property owner. And as you stated, in the 1970s, the city council decided to make an exception when it comes to sidewalks damaged by street trees. So currently, if a sidewalk is damaged and it's not damaged by a street tree, that responsibility is the responsibility of that property owner. That is the law today. But given the fact that we haven't had a coherent policy over the last few decades, we're recommending a phased-in approach, one related to residential property. With residential property, we're recommending that the city make a commitment to fix every sidewalk that is damaged, regardless of whether it's damaged by a street tree or not. And then, once that work is completed, then the city provide a five-year guarantee that that work will be ongoing or guaranteed for five years. And then after that, that responsibility is that of the property owner. What that does is ensure that, for the long term, this problem is addressed. On commercial property, and we'll talk about why the difference is, we're recommending essentially a two-year process. One year to inform the public that it becomes their responsibility after their sidewalk is assessed to repair it, and the next year to give them an opportunity to do that. We are recommending to facilitate this work, that both residential and commercial property owners will be able to obtain a no-fee A permit, which means it's at no cost. They're still required to take, to have a permit. And then in addition to that, we're recommending using our 311 system as a way of generating and organizing the various calls that we receive, building on a system that already works. So in hearing the public, just in the short period that our report's been released, and certainly in the questions many of your council offices have raised, we're organizing this presentation in 10 simple questions, and we try to make it as basic as possible. So I listed out what those questions are on the third PowerPoint, stating whose responsibility is to when the program would begin. So I'll move on to the next slide. On page four, we indicate that, again, that the state law is clear, and we cite the specific code and state law, and it essentially establishes that it is the responsibility of the adjacent property owner to maintain. I'm on slide four. On slide five, as you indicated, we establish that this council made the decision to create an exemption when the sidewalk is damaged by a street tree. So on to question number three. What is the city's obligation in the Willetts settlement agreement? The first, and the city attorney is here to certainly answer any questions that you may have, is to ensure that the city comply with the ADA. Now, if the responsibility is of the property owners, why is the city responsible in the first place? That may be a question you're asking. And the answer is, is that while individual property owners throughout the state may be responsible for maintaining their sidewalks, it is the city's responsibility to ensure that there's a program that ensures accessibility. And so the way it exists in many parts around the state is that the city enforces state law. And here in the city of Los Angeles, we haven't had a comprehensive resolution on that issue. And so through this program, we're committing to ensuring that we are in compliance by the ADA, by not just enforcing state law, but as well as, based on how it's recommended, we actually do the work ourselves, at least initially, for residential areas. The Willetts settlement also commits $31 million, and when adjusted for inflation, totals of $1.4 billion over 30 years. It sounds like a lot of money. It certainly is. It's a huge financial commitment that the city's making. What this means that in 10 years from now, or 15 years from now, if the city is ever in financial crisis and is making difficult choices about what services to maintain and what services to potentially cut, on our list, we cannot include the elimination of this program. This program will continue regardless of good times and bad times. What you've made a decision on is that sidewalks are a priority and that we can continue to be funded over the period of the next 30 years. We committed to an accountable and transparent process so that the public understands how we're doing this work, and we could actually map it out online. We committed to establishing a website where you could log in and determine what work needs to be done, what work is being done, and what work is being planned to be done. We committed to have an element of the program that's specifically responsive to issues raised by the disabled community. So if you yourself are disabled or have a loved one or a friend who's disabled, you can make a call and request that that particular sidewalk and pathway be addressed, and we committed a certain percentage of the $31 million for that purpose. We also committed, given the scope of the problem and given the fact that we don't have one report today that tells us what is required to meet this need, we committed to go after the worst of the worst, to prioritize this work, to maximize accessibility as quickly as possible. And then, of course, we provided to do this in a way that's cost-effective and responsible, given that these are our public funds. Now, when we looked around, looked at this issue on slide number seven, many of you asked, well, what are the different options that we have to be consistent with the settlement and what it's done throughout the city, I mean, throughout the state and indeed throughout the country? And if you look on slide number seven, we lay out the various options that you could pursue and still be consistent with the direction that's been provided in the Willetts agreement. The first one is simply to request that everybody, regardless of whether they're a residential property owner or a commercial property owner, be immediately in compliance with state law. That's certainly an option that you have. We would recommend, again, giving two years' notice, but basically start enforcing state law. That is an option that you have, and you'll be consistent with that program. We would essentially use the $31 million to build the capacity for enforcement of state law. And it would take some time to hire up to be able to do that, but that is certainly an option that you could pursue. The second option is to require that a sidewalk be in compliance with the ADA at the point of sale. So before you're able to sell your property, we could mandate that the property owner ensure that their sidewalk is accessible, otherwise that sale cannot occur. That exists in other parts of the country. We could also require that at point of permit, to the extent that you do major work to your home, requiring a permit, that we could require that at the point of permit, you be mandated as a property owner to repair that sidewalk. We could also require it at the point of service. So when you seek to sign up for your utilities, sign up for your trash service, at any point of service, we require that you have your sidewalk accessible as a condition of that service. We could also pursue a cost-sharing model, where the city establishes that everyone must be in compliance with state law. But in order to incentivize or to facilitate this work, we could pursue a variety of cost-sharing models. The most common, certainly something that's been done by the city in the past, is a 50-50 program. And so we would commit to pay for 50% of the costs, and the property owner would pay the other 50%. The city could establish that we would fix all sidewalks, that that would be essentially a city responsibility forever. And with that, we would need certainly more than the 30-plus million dollar commitment. We would need to ensure that we have the financial capacity to address the footprint of sidewalks that we have in the city, which is among the largest in the country. And then the final option that we have is the one that we're recommending for residential, is the fix and release, where we commit to fix it the first time, but then make it a responsibility after that of the property owner. So what are other cities doing around the country? And based on surveys done by various associations, city associations, one particularly established that cities around the country have a variety of approaches. So 46% of them split that responsibility between the city and property owners. 40% of it have the property owners exclusively take on that responsibility. And the smallest percentage of cities that were surveyed are done by the city exclusively. So what do cities in California do specifically, given that the state law applies? And what you'll see, we looked at a number of cities ranging from Anaheim to Santa Monica, up north, and Berkeley and Oakland. And what you'll find is that there's a variety of different approaches that cities have taken. In Anaheim, the city and the property owners are sharing that responsibility. Property owners are responsible for sidewalks damaged by their trees while the city repairs all others. In Berkeley, there's a 50-50 program. In Oakland, the city repairs sidewalks damaged by street trees. And then there's a notice to repair issue for sidewalks damaged by anything else. In Pasadena, it's a point-of-permit program triggered by the issuance of a single-family or multifamily occupancy permit. In Sacramento, sidewalks inspections are triggered by citizen complaints, and then they have a triage that they pursue at that point. In San Francisco, there's a proactive inspection of sidewalks over a 25-year cycle, and property owners are not liable for that responsibility. And in San Diego, there's also a cost-sharing of 75% the city, 25% the property owners, but ultimately, the repairs are done by the city. And in Santa Monica, one of the few cities that has the sidewalks repaired by the city itself. So after this analysis of looking at what's allowed under the Willetts settlement, working in collaboration with the other city departments, our report has a number of recommendations. We'll quickly walk through those. The first is that we establish a comprehensive program, consistent with the settlement. The second is that we clarify who's ultimately responsible within the city family to ensure this program, and we're recommending that that responsibility be given to the city engineer with the oversight of the Board of Public Works. And the reason we recommend that is because we believe this is a program that's going to have to adapt over time. And this is a board that has direct accountability to the mayor and to all of you. It has a responsibility to be responsive to the issues of the community. And over time, as this program gets rolled out, we believe that they're best equipped to ensure that the fine balance between ensuring accessibility and making sure that it's done in a fair and responsible way could be maintained, and recommendations could be introduced to your council in the future as this program needs further changes and adaptations. We recommend that we phase in the responsibility of all sidewalks, including those that are damaged by street trees, back to the property owner in a phased-in approach, as we lay out in this report. We recommend an extensive tracking system to ensure that all sidewalk repairs are being met. We are committed in the Willetts settlement, and we're also recommending, and it's part of the budget you just approved, that there be an ADA coordinator for the pedestrian right-of-way, with specific specifications and experience and education. Sidewalks are actually a lot more complicated than they seem. There's a lot of federal and state laws that establish what an accessible sidewalk is. State law and federal law is constantly evolving, and so we need to develop our own expertise to make sure that we're constantly in compliance with the most stringent requirements. We recommend a sidewalk assessment management system so that, over time, we could assess what work is being done and project out in the future what work needs to be done, and start developing a grid, if you will, to understand where, or where we're actually establishing accessible pathways throughout the city. We are recommending providing assistance to property owners, initiating repairs by creating pre-qualified list. We essentially using our expertise, we put a list together of vendors who have been proven to be experts in understanding this area. And this helps both the property owner in terms of identifying who would be best to hire, but it also helps the city, because then in our own permitting process, we know that the work has been done at a certain quality. And then we also recommend waiving any permit fees. And then finally, we recommend that we continue to protect our urban forestry and ensure that the city continues to practice a two-to-one replacement for any tree that is removed and four-to-one for any protected trees. Of course, under the settlement, we are committed to do whatever we can within reason, within cost, to protect trees, but ultimately, the goal of this program is to ensure accessibility for the disabled. Question number seven, why ultimately turn over the responsibility to maintain sidewalks for property owners? This is probably the most controversial part of our recommendation, and the basic reality is that the status quo is simply not working, as many of you stated. You know, it has resulted in what we have today, which I think everyone would agree is simply not acceptable. We don't have a coherent policy. It's not clear whose responsibility it is. As I stated, a sidewalk that's damaged, that's not damaged, that is damaged, and that damage is not as a result of the street tree, is currently the responsibility of the property owner, but the city simply hasn't been very effective in enforcing that law. This proposal ensures, also ensures, that this is an ongoing program. And as I said from the onset, we don't want to be here again 10, 15, 20 years from now. We want to ensure that we have a program that's going to be ongoing and ensures accessibility. All sidewalk work repair requirements that were not created by tree roots are, in fact, today, the responsibility of the property owner, and that's why we recommend maintaining that. And then this policy would provide some clarification to all of that. On question number eight, why should we have two different approaches? The first approach, the simple reality is, is that today, commercial property owners and renters providing service to the public have an obligation, as we do, to be in compliance with the ADA and state law. So if you provide a service to the community, you have a responsibility- So if you provide a service to the community, you have a responsibility to ensure that your place of entry is accessible. So that is clear, and so that's a unique responsibility that is not shared by residential property owners. We also know that the 1.4 billion is simply not enough. So if the city were to commit to fix all sidewalks on an ongoing basis, 1.4 would not do it. It would require a much more significant contribution. We also know, in talking to the experts within the city, that the commercial sidewalks are the more expensive ones to actually fix. You could walk down the street down to Broadway, for example. The sidewalks underneath Broadway are actually part of the basements of the properties next to them. So many of the sidewalks have glass bricks so the light could go in into the basement itself. An assessment of how much that would cost to repair those sidewalks, and Broadway alone would be over $10 million per block. And when you're committing $31 million, that would wipe out, just in three blocks alone, you basically take care of 100% of one-year allocation of this program. And that repair would obviously also enhance the value of that property and ensure that there's greater stability for that building and for the basement underneath it. And then finally, commercial property owners have more options to finance this cost. When you look at the bids that exist in the city, and we're recommending more bids, they could amortize those costs over a longer period of time based on the overall value of the property that they own. There's simply more options that they have that residential property owners do not have. On question number nine, again, we talk about the urban forest and how do we intend to protect it. We continue to make it a priority. We want to make sure that the process is streamlined through the Board and Public Works, and they're currently working on strengthening their policies and procedures to accommodate this work, and that we maintain the practice of two-to-one replacement for trees and four-to-one replacement for those trees damaged that are actually protected. And then the final question is, when will it all begin? So as you all know, we've already started this work. Under the Willet settlement, the city committed to fix the sidewalks adjacent to city property first. And the reason that was done is because there is no question that those sidewalks are, in fact, the city's responsibility. There's no policy debate. We're responsible for those sidewalks. And there are many sidewalks that are adjacent to city property or in our parks that need repair, and so we're making that commitment, and that was mandated in the Willet settlement that we do so. But we're hoping is that through the work of your committee and ultimately the council, that by, you know, maybe early fall, late summer, the policy direction will be established, and that the work itself for residential and commercial properties can begin in calendar year 2016. And that gives the city time to put together the infrastructure necessary to roll out this program. It gives us time to communicate to the public what the responsibility will be, and ultimately establish also within the city, the ability to track those changes, put the website together, hire the people we need. So our goal is to have it initiated the next calendar year. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. You know, I welcome members of the Board of Public Works and Gary Lee Moore and others to join me in responding to any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Santana. I see members of the Board of our Public Works, Commissioner President James, Commissioner Zabo, many other commissioners here. Monaco Rodriguez, Commissioner, thank you for joining us, of course, and the entire Public Works Bureau. You know, I mentioned earlier the importance of ensuring that we stretch that $31 million, ensuring that we get the best and highest use of those dollars that we've committed. What are your ideas that we can get the most money for the buck? Would it be possible to select a single citywide contractor? Or can we use an alternative project delivery model like a design-build or a construction manager to monitor this entire undertaking?
Welcome, Gary, to join me, but the period that we're in now, my understanding is we're experimenting with a variety of different approaches. So we're using a list that's been pre-selected by the Department of Wreck and Parks. That list of contractors is moving forward and doing the work on city property. We also have our own workforce that the city has been directing to repair some of this work. So I'll have Gary respond more specifically to that question.
Good afternoon, members. Gary Lee Moore, City Engineer. In addition to what McGill said, we're also using, we have an on-call contract that we use, a geotechnical, which has the ability to repair sidewalks because of the urgent necessity of our sidewalks. So we're now implementing, using that also. We'll continue to evolve. The thing that we're doing with using multiple different contractors right now is to build up some of the capability out there so that they're familiar with what we're trying to accomplish here. So as we go forward, we're open to, you know, on an annual basis, possibly having one contractor. As you well know, with 469 square miles approximately in the city of Los Angeles, sometimes it's more economical for the contractors to have a certain area to work in different parts of the city, to be more efficient. So we're looking at that. We had a workshop with the contractors just a few weeks ago to help facilitate the subcontracting opportunities with the contractors and so forth. So we're trying to get the word out there and look at what is the most efficient manner on the portion that would be contracted out.
And the $31 million strictly for project delivery, does it include personnel costs as well?
So the $31 million covers all costs. So the measure that we use is the "but for" measure. So but for this program, would we be making this expenditure? And so anything that we're currently spending doesn't qualify, but anything additional, actually prior to the last fiscal year qualifies for that. So the cost of managing this program, the cost of developing the website, the cost of the administration, and the cost of the bricks and mortar and the concrete all fall into that.
And in those costs that you've put together, do they include direct and indirect costs? Because as you heard me say in the motions that I've led the last couple of years, is we need to look at the difference between, you know, the direct and indirect costs because we're pricing our way out of this and to the point where we need to look at outside contractors to do the work. It's something that I struggle with because we have an incredible workforce that are willing and able to do the job.
So the $31 million that's set aside, we could use to pay for the direct and indirect cost of that work. So if a city worker is doing that work, it would help cover their salaries or pensions, their healthcare, and the administration of the program. What's not covered are things that are frankly paid for anyway. So for example, the cost of the city attorney's office or the cost of other sort of administration at that level doesn't necessarily qualify. But if it's specific to administer this program, if we need to hire a workforce, if we need to have managers administer contracts, if we need to hire website designers to ensure that we have it in a way that's accessible and user-friendly, all of that. So it sounds like a lot of money. $31 million certainly sounds like a lot. But when you start calculating all the costs associated with running this kind of program, not all of it goes for concrete.
Yeah, that's something I struggle with. The majority of those dollars should go towards concrete so we can get the most sidewalks fixed. Talk to me about, or can you explain to me how these requests will be prioritized? Because as you know, you've mentioned in your report identifying the worst for the worst. What's the game plan moving forward on prioritizing the work?
So we're developing that system now, but what we've committed to in the Willet's case is that we're committing, addressing those sidewalks that are problematic for people who are disabled or for family members of people who call, that we use our 3-1-1 system to take in those calls, and then the work gets prioritized. We also committed that we're going to prioritize those areas that have the greatest use. So looking at commercial areas, areas of employment, areas near transit corridors, areas where people are actually walking and trying to get from one place to another are going to fall higher on the list. And then we also carved out some funds for residential areas. So the center of this settlement is ensuring accessibility. So we will, on an annual basis, demonstrate how we're making the city more accessible, how we're responding to the disabled community. Of course, the disabled community, like any community, should have access to all aspects of the city, and that's why it's a program that ultimately should result in every part of the city being accessible.
I was just going to add, Councilman Bouskano, is, you know, when you go out and you, as McGill said, you look at one site, what we're recommending is you basically would come out to do that whole block. It would be very inefficient to just go to one property. You'd want to probably go, you know, corner to corner. So that type of thing we'll be considering also when we go out to these sites.
Appreciate that. Explain to me the inventory that we currently have in place. How true is that 40% of the 11,000 miles of sidewalks that are in disrepair? And say if someone was to make a lodge a call on 3-1-1 five years ago, is that complaint still valid? Is it in the books? Can we go back to these types of complaints or calls that were generated years ago?
Well, to answer your first question, frankly, we really don't know the extent of the problem. And we spent a lot of time with the plaintiffs discussing whether or not it would be necessary to do, invest in a full assessment of the city. I think that there was a discussion about how much that would cost, about $10 million, and how much it would take. And at the end of that process, it was determined by both sides that what makes sense is not a snapshot of the way sidewalks are today, because again, sidewalks are evolving, they're constantly changing, and so it would be a good report for that day, but it wouldn't necessarily be relevant 10 years from now or 20 years from now. But instead, to begin to roll out a program, to make a commitment to city-owned property, which is clearly our responsibility, and then at a later point, perhaps after five years of experience or a few years of experience, make an assessment of whether we need a check-in to determine if a citywide evaluation of the state of sidewalks makes sense. And so because we would have been spending a significant amount of money at the onset and delaying the rollout of a program to simply have an assessment done first, and it was everyone's interest to try to get something done quickly, gather more information, trying to develop the infrastructure, have your council review, and ultimately make decisions on some of these major policy questions. And then, again, because this is a 30-year commitment, over time, it may be necessary to have a full assessment, but not to start.
And McGill, answering, this is my last question. I'll turn over to Mr. Kocorian. Answering question for what options the city have to be in compliance, there's a menu of options, but you honed in on the fix and release option, and that's because based on funding availability over 30 years. Why didn't you propose a menu of options moving forward on this, crafting this, putting together these recommendations?
So we looked at all these options. These are not all of them that we looked at, but the main ones. And our recommendation is, tries to seek a balance. There hasn't been a coherent policy in the last few decades. And so we thought the best recommendation would be one that takes care of this issue for the long term, but does it in a way that's phased in and more palatable for the public. And, you know, we could be like most other cities and simply do inspections and require that everyone fix their sidewalk and sort of build an army of enforcers to do that. That would certainly get the job done faster. It would ensure the accessibility at a much quicker rate. But the reason we're not recommending that for residential is because of the fact that the city hasn't had a comprehensive program. For commercial, we're recommending it because they do have a responsibility under federal and state law to ensure that their place of business is accessible. And it's a responsibility that we feel, our role is to enforce the law in those cases. And they have more options in terms of how they could actually finance those costs. They could use existing bids or start other bids. They have their own financial capacities internally to cover that cost. And so there's just simply more flexibility when it comes to commercial. And so that's ultimately where we ended up. But certainly, your council has a variety of options before it that it could pursue, not just the ones we're recommending.
I'm looking forward to the ongoing discussion moving forward and finding ways to put together a policy that works for everyone. I personally struggle with the fact that we're asking the businesses, again, to make another contribution to the city, and it's with great hope that through this discussion that we're able to, you know, put together a program that will work for everyone. Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bouskano. And again, just to be clear, nobody's asking anything yet. That's been a suggestion that's been offered, but that certainly has not come from this council yet or this joint committee. Mr. Bouskano's office and my office have been working with the CAO for many months now and trying to hash through some of these policies. So I don't have a lot of specific questions at the moment, but I do want to make a couple of points, I think, before I throw it over to some of my members. First, we've had a lot of discussion about the Willet's case here, and that's appropriate because the Willet's settlement was significant, and it resulted in a significant financial commitment. But I think it's also important to note that this is not a hearing about the Willet settlement. This is a hearing about the adoption of a long-term policy by the city to ensure a sound sidewalk system in good repair that is also accessible to our disabled and elderly community. And so I just want to make sure that our dialogue is not just about resolution of a lawsuit. That's important, but it's also important to develop a sustainable, long-term visionary policy that results in a good sidewalk system. So the $31 million figure that was reached in the Willet settlement may or may not be the measure of what we commit to this policy. We may, in fact, commit more resources than that in a given year. All that number represents is the floor of the commitment that we made in the context of that Willet settlement. So I don't want us to get too caught up in that $31 million as being some magic number. It isn't. It's merely a floor. It should also be pointed out that the council has not waited for the resolution of the Willet's case to begin the resolution of this problem. And a number of the members here have participated in motions that we've been introducing and pursuing that have resulted in the creation of the Sidewalk Trust Fund. In 2013, 2014, $10 million was set aside for sidewalk repair. In 2014, 2015, another $20 million was set aside. And in the coming budget that this council just approved and that the mayor just signed, there's another $20 million set aside for sidewalk repair. So we're acting on this, and that money is being spent today. And people need to understand, we're not waiting for this policy. That $50 million that's been set aside over the last three fiscal years is being spent right now, and it's being spent in the places where it's going to have the most impact on the public, and that is in sidewalks adjacent to the public's properties, parks, libraries, police stations, fire stations, and other public buildings. So we're at work on that already. Now with regard to that $31 million figure, again, we talked about some of the components that might be counted against that, and it does sound like a lot of money, especially when you stretch it over 30 years, and it adds up to well over a billion dollars. It's important, I think, to keep it in the context that $31 million a year is about half of 1% of the city's general fund. That's significant, but it's a manageable commitment that we're making for an but it's a manageable commitment that we're making for an investment in our infrastructure that's going to make our communities better, um, our neighborhoods and our businesses and our public, uh, infrastructure more accessible, uh, to the public. It's a small price to pay. Um, and with that, with those, with a sidewalk system that works, we're also eliminating much of the exposure to liability that the city faces right now for trip and fall cases. Every single week, the Budget and Finance Committee is, is faced with another trip and fall case, it seems like, on sidewalks that results in real liability and a real expenditure. And when we're done with this expenditure, a lot of those expenses will be eliminated. Now, I, I do wanna go back one moment to the status quo, 'cause you touched upon that, Mr. Santana, and I wanna make sure that everybody really understands what the current state of, um, the balance of liability is, if you will. Despite the change in policy that this city made in the nineteen seventies, right now, today, and for the last hundred years, it has been the responsibility of the adjacent property owner to repair all damage to all sidewalks that are not caused by tree roots. So, if the ground subsides and the sidewalk cracks, that has never been anyone's responsibility, other than the adjacent property owner, since before the city opened the aqueduct. Since before the city opened the breakwater in the port. It has been the responsibility of the adjacent property owner, and it is today. Um, if damage is caused to a sidewalk by a root of a tree that is not a street tree, it is the responsibility of the property owner, and it always has been. So, I wanna make sure people understand that there's not some dramatic sea change happening here by which the, uh, uh, property owners, all of a sudden, taking on responsibilities that they don't currently have. They have had it all along. It's just that the city hasn't been citing, hasn't been inspecting and citing and insisting upon those repairs. Um, the other challenge that we have with street trees, now that we've made this street tree exception, is the, the great difficulty in the city of identifying what a street tree is. Um, there are many trees planted in the rights of way throughout the city that were planted by some previous homeowner, that were never planted by a developer, or by the city, or by a neighborhood council, or anything else. And we have no way to identify who was responsible for the planting of those trees. Um, by the same token, there've been trees that've probably been removed, that were planted as, as street trees. So, having a fix on who, in fact, is responsible for those street trees has become, over the last seventy-five years or so, virtually im- impossible. In fact, is, is there any way that we can really define, at this point, Mr. Santana, what tree damage is within the context of that exception and which is not?
The honest truth is that, no, we cannot. There's, there's no way of knowing, and as you indicated, trees don't come with a, with a label indicating who planted them originally. And so, it's, it's a, it's a far more complicated issue, um, than, um, that allows us to engage in a coherent policy.
Now, a lot of, um, property owners have been concerned about shifting liability for personal injury. And they've expressed the concern that, well, if, if the street tree, uh, exemption is taken away, um, that will somehow shift per- liability for personal injury from the city to the property owner. Um, have you considered whether there is such a shift of, of liability in those situations?
Well, we could certainly ask the city attorney to respond to that, but it's my understanding that liability exists today. But people choose to sue the city because we're obviously the deep pockets. And because we don't have a comprehensive strategy now to enforce state law, then we're, we're vulnerable to, um, those various cases. What this, what the settlement does is establishes a comprehensive, um, commitment, and your policy will establish a comprehensive strategy. And so, any future liability we'll be able to turn to is say, in fact, the city does have a plan, uh, and it's gonna take time to roll out, uh, but eventually, all of our sidewalks will be accessible. But the liability currently exists today.
Okay. Very good. Um...
Go to your committee first, doesn't matter.
Mr. Blumentfeld looks like he is teed up and ready to go, so.
Absolutely. I have a number, I think it's really interesting work that you've been doing here, and I, I wanna applaud you first and foremost for, for starting to tackle this important issue. I have a couple of, of sort of quick factual questions, and then, and then a little, a few more ideas, maybe deeper questions. You know, one, just on the fa-, on the quick side of things, you talked about an A permit everyone have to get in the future. Are you envisioning that as being something that someone can get online without having to go into an office?
Uh, you currently have that capability to go online now and get an A permit, and that capability would continue.
Great. Now, it's just, I wanna put that out there. If we're doing something massive like this, it needs to be online and, and easy. Um, on page seven, you talk about the, um, the big option, if the city did everything, obviously, that would cost a tremendous amount. Is there a, an estimate of how much that would cost, how many billions of dollars, if we were to just assume all the liability and, and do that?
You know, we really don't have that estimate today, because again, we don't have a report that tells us the extent of the problem. Um, but just anecdotally, given the work that's been done so far, uh, not just, uh, currently with the investment that your council has made, but I know many of your council offices have made a commitment, uh, using your discretionary dollars for this purpose, as well as, uh, planned work, like what I indicated in Broadway, that the, the one point four billion dollars would simply not be enough. Um, because, uh, also because a lot of other decisions as to who does the work, how it's managed, uh, those are still outstanding as well.
It's just, it's good to have those kind of, when talking with constituents, to have those ballpark estimates, we're talking about five billion dollars, ten billion dollars, fifty billion dollars. I don't know, but it, it'd be nice to have a sense of what that range is, even if we can't have an estimate, just as this discussion goes, for people to understand that. Another sort of factual question, what about in mixed-use areas, where you have residential on top of commercial? Um, how do you make it, under your, obviously, decisions haven't been made, but under your idea of proposal, how does that approach?
So, we, we spent actually some time, as a committee, discussing this very question, and, and we came down to a very simple approach. And we basically recommend looking at your trash cans. So, if the city picks up your trash, then it's, falls under residential. If it's a multi-unit household, which is what you just described, where it's commercial at the bottom and residential at the top, that is done by a private hauler. That would be under the franchise that you recently approved. And so, that would be the simplest way of distinguishing, uh, whether your, your property is deemed residential or commercial. And so, multi-unit households are, are, use private haulers to pick up trash. And so, we would, um, identify that as being, uh, commercial property, uh, and, uh, requ-, and it would fall under that program, underneath that. The reason we did that is because the, a property is maybe, uh, an apartment building is owned by a, a private developer, um, or if it's a condominium, those costs are shared by everybody and prorated. And so, instead of getting in a situation where the city's actually, uh, making those determinations, we decided to recommend something that was much more direct and simple.
Okay. A couple of other things. The, um, the thirty-one million a year is a legal revenue stream. Is that technically something we could bond against if we wanted to do the one point four billion over the course of two, three years instead of thirty years?
The city, uh, the settlement doesn't prohibit that, and that's something that the city could look at to, to securitize that financial commitment. Uh, over, you know, let's say in the first four years, uh, all the policy issues are resolved, there's an aggressive program in one direction or the other, and there's a decision to make a sizable commitment over the next five to ten years. So, ha-, you know, five hundred million dollars, for example, and to, to front-load it. Um, the settlement allows for that to be a solution, uh, again, under the idea that we wanted to provide future councils the flexibility to meet the needs of the community. So, it doesn't mandate it, um, but it certainly doesn't prohibit it.
That's sort of factual, it makes sense, and obviously, depending on how the policy goes, that may, may or may not make, uh, sense. Um, another sort of factual question on the, uh, fix and release, how do you define, or how are you envisioning defining fixed? And I, I ask that in the sense of, you know, you can have a ficus tree tearing up a sidewalk, and the full fix would be to rip up that pavement, grind down the roots, and, you know, re- replace it with something. Whereas, a, a temporary fix, or a, a fix, could be to, to just cut the side, you know, smooth the sidewalk, or use the foam to lift the grade so that it's an acceptably passable grade. To do something that would be, uh, less expensive, um, maybe a good fix for a short period of time, but may not be a complete fix. And so, how do you distinguish when you're releasing that, uh, to the homeowner? Um, does it have to be a full fix, or, or, a- at what point is the release to the homeowner? Or is it any fix?
No, so, and so, that's a, we spent a lot of time discussing that as well. So, to clarify, the city would be certifying all sidewalks. So, if, if your sidewalk today is accessible, doesn't require any work, then that sidewalk will be certified, and you'll have that certification. Um, in, in twenty years from now, if that sidewalk needs repair, then it's your responsibility to repair it, under the fix and release program. If the pro-, if the sidewalk is not accessible, and there are very specific standards as to what define accessibility, based on state and federal, uh, regulations, then the city would commit to make that repair. Um, and the, the quality of that repair is guaranteed for a period of five years. So, the, the kind of technique that is used, the level of, of grading, the, the, the kind of approach, will be determined by our ability to guarantee that work for five years. Um, if, if, w- if we simply choose to grind down that sidewalk, and then we find out in year three, that sidewalk is not repaired, that it needs repair again, then the property owner could call the city, and the city will make sure that that property is repaired. If it's, if it needs repair in year ten, then it becomes a responsibility of the property.
You're defining by, by a timeline.
Yes.
I get that. Okay. That's, um, another question about the incent-, the possibility of incentives, you know, for example, one of the things I thought about, and we've talked about, is either the fifty-fifty or some sort of reverse auction for, um, homeowners, whereby, if you're willing to pay for ninety percent of the, the project, you can get it done tomorrow, you know. If you're willing to pay eighty percent, it would be, uh, you'd be in the next tranche, et cetera, et cetera, as a way to incentivize people to spend more money, of their money upfront, to make it happen faster, which would both help make the roads happen faster and create more of the public money, uh, flowing through the system. Have you guys thought about that in this proposal? Is that something we'd get more information about as an idea?
So, we, we considered sort of various programs like that. Um, because for properties that are residential, the city's committing to make that fix. We're incurring a hundred percent of that cost. And then after that, it becomes a responsibility of the property owner. Um, for commercial, uh, the city could choose to incentivize through a fifty-fifty type of program or some other program.
But, but on the residential, you could do the same. I mean, I would think this might be a way to get more money into the system, if a, a resident knows that it, the city's gonna ultimately pay for the hundred percent, but it could be this year, in five years, or thirty years. Um, it may be, they may wanna pay for some of that to make it happen, and that may be in our mutual interest as a city, uh, as well as, you know, with that individual.
And I, I think, again, that what, our approach was based on trying to roll out the program in the most simple manner initially. And over time, in, you know, after we, we resolve a lot of sort of the policy issues, uh, have a list of vendors, uh, in many ways, um, the city will be establishing a market, if you will, including different technology of kinds of sidewalk that could be used. Um, that at, at some point, as early as the first few years, there could be an evaluation of, how do we, now that we've worked out sort of the programmatic aspects, how can we, uh, roll this out in a much aggressive way and incentivize it? And, and again, as Mr. Kocorian indicated, the financial commitment in the settlement is the floor. I- if the city, we, you know, in the past, the city has made annual contributions for, um, sidewalk work. There's nothing that prohibits your council from saying, for this fiscal year, we're gonna not just do thirty-one, we're gonna add another twenty million, and structure that as a, as a, a way to incentivize property owners to do that. And, um, and that's certainly within, uh, your authority to do so. Uh, but at least initially, our recommendation is that we keep it simple. We roll out, roll it out in a very direct way, uh, establish the, the, the foundation of what the program's gonna look like. And then, over time, as new resources come in, as we learn new information, uh, enhance it through the kinds of incentives that you talked, just talked about.
And, and I appreciate that. And obviously, we, we could choose to add more money or, or take a portion of the thirty-one baseline and, and do these kinds of things.
Right.
Another piece, though, and I, I know, I don't wanna take up time, maybe the last question on my, on my list for the moment. I don't want us to lose the opportunity to do some creative things when we do all these sidewalk repairs. And, and I've talked a lot, and have motions about alternative materials, um, making sure that in this initial baseline, we, we have that covered to the maximum extent possible, where we have acceptable vendors for permeable materials for, um, all the different types of materials, as well as some other, you know, city priorities, like, um, having conduit built into our sidewalks, so that if we wanna be laying fiber as part of CityLink or part of whatever, uh, that we don't do all this work and not have a, you know, dollar fifty plastic tube running down, uh, the sidewalk, so that, you know, we can't do things in the future. Uh, how do you propose that we make sure that those type of creative alternatives get, both for the alternative materials, environmental materials, as well as for things such as conduit, get baked into the, into the process? How do we, how do we do that?
Um, well, in relation to alternative materials, I think, you know, we, you introduced a motion to look at, uh, the latest technology, that were the plastic slabs as a, as a potential use. Um, unfortunately, those slabs haven't passed the testing that G S D has undergone in terms of friction. But there's nothing that, in fact, we encourage is that the, that the city basically establish through a process, in our, a competitive process, its expectations. You know, what kind of material, what kind of goals do we wanna achieve? Do we want a sidewalk that allows the water to seep into the ground? Um, do we want a sidewalk that outlives even what concrete does? And, and really, uh, turn to the private sector and the market to produce the best product to meet that need. And, uh, certainly, over time, uh, the city will be in a position to be able to, to shape the market, because we're gonna be making such a huge investment. The same thing goes in terms of finding opportunities to do more than just lay concrete, but to, uh, um, take advantage of the fact that we're gonna be making this huge investment by putting fiber optics or other kinds of, uh, uh, opportunities like that. And so, again, um, as, as many of you stated, this is a beginning of a, of a, of a long-term conversation about, uh, how are we gonna do this work? And it's, and it's, we're recommending in our report that a, that we're constantly evaluating how it's going and how to maximize, uh, this investment to, to meet other needs, but also to ensure that we're, uh, using the latest technology, um, the best, the best kind of, um, and, and meeting other goals that the city has.
Mr. Engler?
Great, thank you. Um, I think a lot has been said, and I wanna thank, um, uh, both of the committee chairs, Mr. Buscagno and Kocorian, for their openings. And I think you've covered the history, and Mr. Santana and Gary as well, Gary Lee Moore, the history and what brought us here today. So, I'll spare the monologue. But, um, with that, and and just a few questions, just to go through some of the things that have been stated, um, wanna get some input on, when you talked about commercial and determ-, making the determination based on who picks up their trash, are nonprofits considered commercial, then?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so, one of the issues that I'm struggling with, uh, and, well, before I get into that, let me ask a question. I, we, we've gotten a lot of feedback through years of this discussion, of all the various cities and policies and best practices and historical perspectives of what they do and what they've done. And usually, what we hear back is that, um, the cities that are pointed out to us, uh, have put the responsibility on the property owners. Um, but have we done the research to find out what cities do the work? And actually, 'cause I've heard of a lot of cities that actually maintain the sidewalks, and having that reflected in the report as well, so we can understand... in the report as well, so we can understand the whole pool of what's going on out there and who's doing what. I do have an issue with, and I was going to say bifurcating, but I'll say discriminating against the various property type owners, whether it's commercial, nonprofit, residential, property owners or property owners. And in fact, in many cases, property owners aren't individuals. There are many, many, many property, single-family homes in this city that are rented out. And many owners, in fact, that have multiple properties and duplexes. And you're getting into all of those kinds of scenarios where you're really talking about a ying and a yang. It's not that we don't want to put it on the backs of property owners versus commercial and residential. Notwithstanding the fact of the state and federal law, this has been a 100-year-old practice of us suggesting that the property owner has the responsibility, but we've also assumed all the liability through litigation. So we have this perception, rightly so, that we have the responsibility because while I know the history and without getting into that, we have lost on the liability side of it. We're losing this and doing this now because of that same issue. And so I don't want to skew it and think that, well, we've always said for so long, it's their responsibility and so therefore, let's just codify it. It's more complicated. With that, property owners on the commercial side, and not just arguing for them, because I want to get into this on the residential as well, they don't necessarily have bids and not all bids work. And we're asking, and one person can't form a bid on their own. And that's another issue we've got to consider. Bids are very complicated. It's a taxing structure that they have to get through together. If we're asking folks to form a bid, to tax themselves, to get the property owners to actually participate in a vote, and then take that money to fix sidewalks rather than to attract additional patrons, if it's a commercial property, then that's a whole nother discussion. Many businesses, and particularly the nonprofits, don't have the financial wherewithal to do it. If it means spending another $5,000 to $10,000 or $15,000 on sidewalks, depending on the nature of that organization, that could be a real problem. And it means closing the doors, or it means laying off at-risk youth, or whatever it is that they do. So I think we've got to look at that, just as we have in recent discussions on another issue, and not just putting it on saying, well, they're not residents, so they can absorb it. The reality is they can't. If we're going to actually look at all options and put all options on the table, and I think you've done what you always do in a very good job in putting out, okay, just going to lay out all the options. Well, then, we should really lay out all the options. First, on the cost-sharing model and the 50/50, we certainly could include commercial on that as well, not just residents. On the fix and release, it's the same thing, that we're talking about a fix and release back to resident versus it wasn't discussed and it's not on the table or on the chart of options to, say, fix and release for residents for all sidewalks. I think that should be considered as we go out and take this out on the road and talk to these folks. We know that we've been, created already a very difficult, and I say we, over the last 50 years, I mean, we've inherited a very competitive, disadvantaged perspective on, for nonprofits and for businesses, especially small and local businesses. And it becomes very complicated. And I'll just throw in one more reason why. It's another complication on commercial property owners. What happens when you get into a situation of a commercial property, and let's just throw in a shopping center as an example, because there's so many different types of commercial properties, where you have, the stores are actually owned by different owners. And maybe there's a, and I know of several. And you've got a commercial property where you have a shopping center and different owners, and one of the owners changes hands. Well, one can determine that, well, based on the square footage, you have a certain percentage. Well, does that mean you only fix when you close escrow a percentage of the sidewalks that are in front of that commercial structure? Does that, what does that trigger? And it becomes complicated. I really think we need to send the businesses a message, and particularly the nonprofits a message, that we are open for business, that we feel that since we've taken the liability on our own, that we should take on that responsibility. And if not, create at a minimum in the same breadth and the same policy, some tax incentive to allow them to do that. I also want to close with one last thing, and that's point of sale. It becomes incredibly difficult for realtors to close properties, point of sale, at the close of escrow, when all of a sudden, you've got an inspector coming out and saying, okay, you've got to do this. Right now, as property values are doing better than they have during short sales and foreclosures and responsibility issues, and that becomes a real burden where they're just not going to move. So I'd like to get the real, make sure that when we go out there to the community to make sure that we get the realtors to weigh in on some of sort of their thoughts and best practices and what their, not concerns only, but their recommendations. And I think we need to hear from some of those groups, because those are the experts that are dealing with those properties. And we rely on them for the transfer tax as well. We rely on them greatly in this community. So with that, those are some of the areas I wanted to cover, and I really, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Engler. And I agree wholeheartedly with the request for breadth of options. I think that the chart on page seven was not intended to exclude those as options I trust, but I do think that we should look much more deeply, particularly on the fix and release, as to how we, to whom that would apply and what it should encompass. The one point that hasn't been raised about distinguishing property owners is other government entities. And it should be noted that sidewalks adjacent to schools are LAUSD's responsibility.
Correct.
Sidewalks adjacent to state and federal buildings are the responsibility of those governments. And personally, I don't see any reason that we should hesitate to begin requiring those government entities to bear their responsibility to fix the sidewalks for our citizens. I think that should commence forthwith. But I also do want to just say, as we're talking about this balance of responsibility, at the end of the day, there isn't a we and them. When people say, well, the city should just do that, the city can only do that with the people's resources. So there isn't a magic pot of money that the city has that can all of a sudden be spent to relieve everyone of their responsibilities. One way or the other, this is a burden that falls on the taxpayers of Los Angeles, either through their own expenditure as property owners, or through their taxes, or through a reduction in their services. Those are the only ways that it can be done. So I think that our goal here is to try to distribute that responsibility in the fairest possible way. And if the city's general fund pays for every single repair, the result of that inevitably will be that property owners and taxpayers throughout Los Angeles, who have perfectly good sidewalks, are going to be paying for the repair of their neighbors' sidewalks. That's the way it goes. That's the way government must work. And so, you know, there isn't any secret way that people in the city can avoid the cost of this repair. The cost of this program will be borne by the people, inevitably, one way or the other. And so I just think it's important that we keep that in mind and not keep trying to chase this phantom solution out there that's not going to cause anybody any pain or expense. Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank both of you for your leadership on this very important issue. And I want to thank you for the CLA's office for its real work on this, CAO's office, excuse me, for its real work on this, because it does impact the quality of life, especially in some parts of town where, you know, the sidewalks, you know, we don't even have curbs. There's some areas around the city where the curbs are dilapidated, the sidewalks don't exist, the drainage is a nightmare. And so I'm excited about this process that's finally going to be able to deliver some services to residents. But I think in addition to counting the number of sidewalks that we do, we also ought to be trying to count the number of businesses that we can assist in this process. And we ought to have some intentional goals for assisting small businesses, small contractors to become qualified, to get into the pool, so that they are a part of this economic boom. And I'd like for us to even track the local residents who, again, who have been hired by local businesses that are providing these services. I mean, $30 million a year is not a lot, but it certainly is a lot more than we've been spending. And I think it's an exciting opportunity for us to really plug into some local businesses, local contractors, local workers, providing them with, you know, some economic benefit as well. And so I, as I said, I'm pleased that we're moving forward with this. I think the idea of pre-qualifying, I think we ought to look at bonding. I think we ought to be doing, I got a number of things, again, to let, use this program as a way of cultivating and assisting small businesses, small contractors. You know, this is not rocket science, but it is a sort of sophisticated professional process, you know, and local businesses can do that. Smaller businesses can do that. You know, they've been laying concrete for a long time. So I'm just hopeful that we will be aggressive in our outreach, that we don't limit the pool of qualified firms to the usual suspects, if you will, but even use it as a training opportunity to encourage new businesses in, new contractors in, who may be able to start off doing sidewalks and they, you know, end up getting larger opportunities. But it's a tremendous shot in the arm, I think, we're going to have over the next several decades. And while $30 million is a floor, it's not going to, it may not be the total amount. And so I'm just hopeful that we can intentionally agree that some percentages, that there's going to be a definite program plan to involve local contractors in ways that we have not before, as a way of incenting, as a way of providing jobs, as a way of recycling those dollars in our community as many times as we can. So.
And I would add from my previous answer also is the Bureau of Street Services will be doing a portion of this work also. So it's, in starting this program, it's definitely a public-private partnership that's going on. Nazar and his team will be delivering a substantial amount of the program also.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. And as I recall in these previous discussions that we had in Public Works Committee, our committee's will to ensure that we share the workload with some of our local nonprofits. I know John Reamer, we had side discussions on the importance of making this, you know, Public Works Gang Reduction Committee, right? We have an opportunity for those in the reentry programs to put them to work. Mr. Bonn in, please.
Chair or Mr.'s chair, I guess.
Mr.'s chair, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Santana, Gary, everybody else for the work on this report. It's great work. I echo a lot of what some of my colleagues have said. I really appreciate Bob asking about the 50/50 program, which I'm very interested in, and his considerable work on trying to promote permeable pavement or alternative uses, which I think are really important for us to do. I also want to echo what Curran said about sort of local contractors. And a model to perhaps look at is, in the late '90s, when the city was promoting low-flow toilets or low-flesh toilets, local community-based organizations were actually hired to help do some of that, or were contracted to do some of that. Clearly, this might be a level of complexity greater than replacing a toilet, but something to think about as we go through this. A couple of questions and just a couple of thoughts to share. You know, this is a great start for what we have to do. There's a lot of sort of finite details that sort of complicate things or raise questions. First of all, though, one of the, just one of the thoughts I wanted to share is, I'm a little concerned with the recommendation I heard a few minutes ago that to treat multi-unit buildings as commercial. I get that. First of all, I appreciate that you're trying to make sure that we use this money wisely and have enough to spend on all of our needs. And I appreciate that you're trying to draw lines between when we should be doing something, when someone else should be doing something, when it should be shared. On the multi-unit, though, you know, honestly, I'd have no problem with someone who owns hundreds of units, like Aimco, for instance, not to pick on someone who has property in my district, but as an example from having to do it. But I worry about the mom-and-pop landlords and their ability to do that. You know, there's a lot of folks who are sort of just getting by with their property holdings. They may just own one six-unit building or something like that. And I'd be a little concerned about the impacts on them. But then I had a couple specific things in my district that I wanted to raise, just to see what your thinking is and how it might fit in here. One of the areas in my district with the worst sidewalks is in Westchester, particularly on Manchester and particularly on Sepulveda. And in both cases, we have extremely buckled sidewalks. And on Manchester, there are no homes that front those sidewalks. The front of the homes are internal to the residential neighborhood, and it's the back of the homes that are up against those sidewalks. So what is the thinking about situations like that, which are sort of anomalous? But those are big, wide sidewalks, and that would be a pretty big burden to be placing onto those residential folks in addition to the ones in front of their homes.
If the property behind it is residential, then under that context, the city would take on that responsibility and certify that sidewalk and then hand it to the property owner. And so without knowing, you know, we would have to review each one of those sections in particular, but if it's the situation that you talked about, then it would be residential and it would be the city's primary responsibility initially to repair those right-ofaways. And I've seen those sidewalks, so I know that they're certainly would qualify among the worst of the worst. And so my guess would be those would fall on the top of the list of sidewalks needing repair.
Equally battered ones on Sepulveda. And we've been very fortunate that the local Business Improvement District has been helping to repair them. Don Duckworth is here. I want to thank him for that work. In a lot of the places on Sepulveda, we have sort of the residential circumstance that I just described, but we also have, a lot of the businesses don't open on to Sepulveda. They open east or west of Sepulveda and have their parking lots and their entrances on those sides. Under this scenario, would they also, would they be responsible for both sets of sidewalks?
Well, again, it would depend on who ultimately owns that parcel, because the state law is clear in terms of defining when your property starts and when it ends vis a vis the street itself. And so short of looking at a parcel mapped and determining who ultimately is responsible, we would have to do that to make that final determination. And if it's a commercial property owner under our recommendation, then it would be the responsibility of that owner. And we would recommend giving them two years to be in compliance. If it's a residential, then the city would do it initially and then hand over that responsibility after that. So it would have to be a review parcel by parcel to determine that responsibility. And, you know, ultimately, each property has to pay property taxes, and that's how you determine in part how, whose responsibility it is.
I have another weird situation in Pacific Palisades, the other end of my district. There's an old gas station there. It was a gas station years ago, probably decades ago. And a local community group got together, purchased the property, and have converted it into a public park. They spend probably tens of thousands every year maintaining it so that the public can enjoy it. It's landscaping, it's benches. It is on paper a commercial property, but it's open as a park for the entire community. And folks are raising and spending a significant chunk of change every year to keep it open as a park for the whole community to enjoy it. Would that still be considered because it's owned as commercial, commercial, and the folks who are doing all this good work for the city and the community are going to get hit again?
Well, it's certainly not residential, so I think it would fall under that. But, you know, I think in the larger discussion that's been had, you know, what we're recommending is a framework that guides most of the work. And of course, in the example, this last example you gave, there are circumstances that may justify the city creating exemptions or making a commitment to repair if there's a public benefit that's already being provided. And so the most important thing that we're recommending, regardless of the specific policy element, is that there be a comprehensive, coherent strategy and approach. And that if there's going to be an exemption to those, that we be clear of what those exemptions are, establish a process for those exemptions, and appropriately fund it. And so this, we try to make, recommend something that was as simple and as direct as we could. And that's why even using trash cans was a very simple way of determining that. And then from that, enhancing it based on these unique circumstances. And then from that, enhancing it based on these unique circumstances, such as the one you described, and I'm sure in every district they exist. And so, right now, the exemption around street trees has informed the policy and the work, and so it's been the other way. It's, it's, you know, because we have one exemption that exists, we basically haven't done a comprehensive strategy, and we're recommending something that doesn't recreate that process or that failure.
In your presentation in the PowerPoint, on page two, for commercial properties, you were suggesting for commercial properties, a one-year moratorium is recommended for the issuances of notices to repair sidewalks for commercial property owners. You, you weren't suggesting that, that there's a ban for one year and doing it, it would be one year before we would issue the notices?
What we recommend is informing the public over a year time, engaging in a campaign, letting them know what the policy is, letting them know that it's coming, and then start the, the certification and the citing with enough time to allow property owners one full year to be in compliance, once they receive that citation with a specific request. And then after that, if the property owner chooses not to do the work, then the city will do the work and then simply ask that the taxpayers get reimbursed when that property gets sold. And so, that ensures that accessibility sort of trumps everything, the, having a sidewalk that's inaccessible is, is no longer an option. The work will still get done, but at the end, the taxpayers still get reimbursed at that, at the end of that process, once that property is sold.
The reason I asked about that is elsewhere, I think it was in your, your actual report, there was something about a, a two-week notice after an inspection that I saw.
A two-week or two-year?
I think it was, I think it was two-week. That that may have been the way our, our notice of complies are generally written?
Oh, that's the current policy today.
Okay, all right. Because that, I, I think you may have trouble getting a contractor, so I think we need to.
Yeah, I think that's the current policy that is in the books today.
And just two last thoughts. In order to protect some of the, the current urban forest, I know some folks have discussed whether or not it makes sense to do some meandering sidewalks. Have we gotten any feedback from Department of Disability and whether or not that poses problems for the disabled community to have meandering sidewalks?
We're looking at, you know, looking at the existing ADA regulations and so forth, so we, we plan on any of the meandering sidewalks to be in full compliance. I know we're looking at one in El Pablo, looking at trying to do, modifying the sidewalk slightly. We're also very supportive there of trying to move the fence a little bit so that we can gain back, because as you said, the urban forest, whenever we can save a tree, it's not about eliminating trees, it's seeing where we can work together. I know talking to Mike Shoal along our public park system where possible, I know that they have certain regulations once it's become parkland, but at the same time, so we're looking at that and still being in compliance with the ADA regulations.
Yeah, we're, we're, if it's something we can do, I think it's something to be encouraged, because I think folks like it, it creates a, a nice environment for, for walking, and it also will help us from having to remove some trees. Final thing that just occurred to me is, for a very long time, we've had a sort of a de facto policy in the city of Los Angeles, if you do improvements on certain streets, our, our, the, the sort of standard recommendation from Public Works is to widen the streets. Thank God, we're moving away from that in the mobility plan as it gets approved, because I think it's sort of an antiquated way of, of, of thinking. But I'm wondering if there's a way we can encourage or incentivize widening of sidewalks, because many of our sidewalks are, are too narrow now. They're not navigable because of the buckling and the cracks, but they're also too narrow, they're hard for a lot of folks to get around, and it discourages pedestrian activity. I'd be curious if there's a way as we do this where we could be incentivizing in areas where appropriate, wider sidewalks.
And, you know, I think that, well, the ADA and state regulations are very specific as to how wide and, and the, and the kind of slope that exists for sidewalks, but I think in relation to widening and even making them more accessible and more attractive, I think other initiatives, like the Great Streets Initiative, really comes into play. And so, you know, one of the things that we would encourage is that as we roll out this program, we do it in, 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 in some coherent manner that's consistent with other initiatives that the city is pursuing. So, as, for example, if there's, every, every council district has a Great Street program in mind, and that not only are you making sure that the sidewalk is accessible based on state law and federal law, but you're also providing the kind of enhancements to create a more pedestrian-friendly community, and, and that's something that could be done through the right kind of planning. Now that we're committing a program, that could be one of the secondary goals that are also established.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Bonn. Check, one, two. Mr. Sadio, questions, comments?
Just let me join the chorus of applauding your efforts and your leadership on this. I think it's, it's important to remember that the duties that we talk about with respect to the sidewalks are attached to the land, and I think that's a simple way to keep that in mind. It may seem more complicated if we wonder who the cafe owner is or the transfer of property, et cetera, but at the end of the day, I think we're having a conversation about duties that run with the land. And one of them, I think, very important is, is the ADA. And I think all of this, this conversation is driven by the fact that we were not in compliance with the ADA. We should have the highest standards for ourselves, and I think that sets the priority as, I think Mr. Krikorian was stating, the schools in the city, right, the state buildings in the city, the, our facilities, all governmental facilities should be in compliance. And that should set the first threshold or standard for us to participate. I think it's both our legal duty and both our, our moral responsibility, and so I applaud your efforts. I would note that something of interest is that we have the Special Olympics this year, and so this would be something to keep in mind. I know that I joined some of our workers, El Arca is one of the host locations in Lincoln Heights, and so I joined some of our workers on a Saturday, believe it or not, in trying to lay out, just working out of class, as they would say, trying to lay out some sidewalk, and they did a great job. And I know that we laid off a lot of workers before we got here, this might be an opportunity to bring back our workforce. I share, obviously, the, the perspective of my, my colleague, Senator Price, but we have a workforce that, that was challenged, struggled, many people laid off during the, the depths of this recession. This new work would be an opportunity for us to bring them back, bring the work back in. That's it. Thank you for your leadership on this, as always.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Thank you very much for a great report. We're looking for, we're looking forward to continuing the dialogue as we move forward. I have two speaker cards on this item. If I can bring up Barry Johnson, please. You'll be given two minutes. Thank you for joining us, Mr. Johnson.
Barry Johnson, Studio City stakeholder. I imagine most of the council members here today are aware of this brochure from the Street Tree Division of the Bureau of Street Services. It's called Street Tree Selection Guide. It is a wonderful guide. It's subtitled Managing the Urban Forest of the City of Los Angeles. It gives us a hundred and fifty different trees that are commonly planted here. It gives them the height, the crown spread, spacing, it says if it's drought tolerant, and it also has, most importantly, the parkway size. And it lists four different parkway sizes, three to four-foot width, four to six-foot width, six to eight, and eight feet or more, which interestingly enough, ficus trees fall under, of course. And it's also of interest to me that forty years ago, the city took responsibility for tree roots and sidewalks from street trees. And it seems about that same time, forty years ago, somebody in Public Works got a great buy on ficus trees and planted them all over the city, including the Hollywood Walk of Fame, which is probably our most expensive sidewalk to fix. So, I would just like to ask that you all, everybody should get one of these brochures in their DWP trash bill. It would be wonderful, and it would also be wonderful if you all would adopt this as not just recommendation, but as you say in, as it's said in the report, you want to focus on ongoing maintenance in the future. Well, let's not get any more ficus trees being planted where they shouldn't be, and if this were in the ordinance, there's a hundred and fifty different trees for these four widths of, of tree, of, of parkways, and it would just be wonderful to incorporate it.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Jim McQuiston, followed by Eric Sanjuro, Sanjuro.
Among other things, you know, I'm an arborist. I have three thousand trees planted in my little sixty-foot lot. And one of the things that you have to remember is that tree roots need oxygen, and if they're under the sidewalk, they will raise the sidewalk so that oxygen can get under the sidewalk. And so you have to be very careful about what trees you use, and ficus trees and many others like camphor trees have very, very strong roots, and they can lift the sidewalks up. And so, what I wanted to say in my little time that I can give you is, I'm very interested in what the CIO has said, because I've been saying the same thing almost for many, many years, and the, the testimony today of the CIO has raised a considerable amount of doubt in my mind. Remember that underneath that sidewalk is the property owner's property, not the city's. And also, you have to remember that when you use the word next to the property owner, you're giving them the idea that the city owns the land under the, the sidewalk. They have an easement. Everybody needs an easement, because otherwise you couldn't get to your property unless you're right on the corner. So that's something else. Everyone shares in this responsibility, and we really have to go back to the state law, because that's the only real answer that solves all these questions that you've been asking today. If we just do what the state has said, even before the twentieth century, we're in good shape. And I can remember forty years when we had to do that, before these other forty years.
Thank you, sir. Eric.
Hi, good evening.
Pronounce your last name, sir.
Sanjuro.
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 Japanese, if you pronounce it like a J.
Welcome.
Hi, speaking today, I guess, for the Neighborhood Advocates.
Yes, it's great to see some Neighborhood Council advocates here, thank you.
So, we haven't taken an official position on the CIO report, but I'll just say generally, I think it is the best roadmap that we've seen for an actual solution. The combination of the legal mandate, the money, and it appears perhaps now the political will, I think brings us closer to a solution to this than we've seen in a long time, so I think it's very positive. The Fix and Release Program, I know is something that Mr. Humphreyville spent a lot of time talking about, and he got quite a few Neighborhood Councils to endorse as a concept, so I think you'll find a lot of support for that, at least among residential folks. And some of the issues that were brought up, I think you talked about, the stickier topics around apartments and businesses, perhaps a fifty-fifty program for those would make sense. The other one, which I didn't hear a lot of discussion of, and I also was a little surprised that the Bureau of Street Services wasn't asked to weigh in on any of these topics, is tree roots. That's really, it's the toughest topic. I know the board was asked to come up with a more coherent policy on tree root damage. I remember former Director Robinson had said to, when we were looking at this issue many years ago, that the average tree root, once you fix the, the root and put the new sidewalk in, it will destroy the sidewalk again within six to eight years, depending on the species. So if you're giving people, turning over in five years, responsibility to the homeowner or whomever, but then it gets broken in six years, you're in the same exact situation in six to eight years. So there has to be some kind of a policy that involves either moving the sidewalk, removing the tree, you know, they have to kind of deal with the real problem, the root of the issue, pardon the pun. Point of sale, I don't know, think anyone at this point is taking that seriously. We spent some time talking about point of purchase, which I was happy to see the CIO mentioned, and point of service, so those are, I think, are more viable options if you're going to be talking about that, but it seems like the Fix and Release is the focus right now. And lastly, just that, I think the gentleman mentioned from the Valley that brochures and websites, we could use better information for the public.
Sure. Thank you. Janet C., please come forward. Thank you, and welcome.
There's a lot of discussion about the tree roots, but I haven't heard anything about tree trimming. Over many years, when I requested the city tree to be trimmed, the city declined, possibly a lack of funds, I don't know. And I'm not a professional like this arborist, but it's my understanding that trimming a tree has a lot to do with keeping roots much smaller and not getting out of control. So that also touches on what was just said about in five years, you're going to have the same problem. So in conjunction with the repairs that are being made, I think the other department that does the tree trimming should be on board and on-site at the same time. And in any event, I hope that the responsibility and cost of the repairs caused by the city's negligence and neglect of those trees should not be transferred to property owners. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Danita Wirta, followed by Jessica Meany.
Good afternoon.
Good evening, Councilmen. I want, I wanted to thank you for bringing this meeting here. The reason I came forward is I'd like to share my sincere thanks to Joe, to Mitch, and to Gil Sadio and Curran Price, because what you want to do is why I'm here, and why I come out here to support your work all the time. The streets need work. People in this city need jobs. Property owners also need incentives to keep rents so we can have homes and we can be here. It is outrageous what's going on with the amount of money that's being discussed, but yet there's nothing being discussed about giving people work that need this, at-risk youth, people who have been long-term unemployed, and people who would be more than happy to give website design or give a new 311 call system or whatever. But if we could go to work and get this done and bring everybody together so our city can recover from this crisis, enough, we've got money. We need to get along and get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jessica Meany, followed by Lonella Enix.
Good afternoon, committee members. My name is Jessica Meany from Investing in Place, and I think it's very exciting that the city of L.A. is really moving forward on really tackling our sidewalks on a comprehensive manner. To me, they're our public realm, and they should be treated as our public realm. It's really, I have chosen to live as a car free Angelino for over fifteen years, and when I walk down the sidewalk to catch the bus, I don't really see the property lines, I see the pathway, just like we see our roads, we need to travel, they're our public spaces. This is a massive infrastructure problem that I think we need to think about the whole system-wide, and I just have been researching, I'm very interested in our transportation finance issues here in L.A. County, and when you look at polls, Los Angeles County Department of Public Health polled voters here in the region for what they want to spend transportation money on, sidewalks is always number one. I think you'll find that you have tremendous public support to fix our sidewalks, to even accelerate it, and I was inspired to hear our CIO's office say, the settlement is the bottom line, we can go all the way further. And I think we should dream big, great streets, the mobility plan, it's a new era in transportation in our sidewalks, we should treat them like we treat our roads, they're our wonderful public space to be together and to be safe and to get to school and all those things, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Lonella Enix, followed by Sid Mansurian.
Hi, I'm Chair of the E.C. Southwest Neighborhood Council. We actually had a sidewalk summit this, within the last six months, so we're really into Fix and Release with some caveats, but as you guys go out and do your tour, what I'm getting from our residents is that the trees are connected to the sidewalks as they make a decision in terms of how the sidewalks are repaired, what's used, what materials or whatever. We're getting a lot of people cut down their trees, we have a lot of stumps, and people need to be able to make that decision about where they're going need to be able to make that decision about what they're going to do with their trees as they're making the decision to repair their, to get their sidewalks repaired. And also, I would urge you to utilize neighborhood councils to kind of help go out and provide that information, help you evaluate sidewalks, because we've been kind of doing an inventory already. So I hope you guys will take those suggestions, and I'll see you, I have more questions, but we'll see you at the tour.
All right. Thank you. Our next speaker is Sid Mansurian, and, Mr. Buscaino, that's the last part that I have. So Mr. Mansurian will be our final speaker.
The name is Makzudian, M-A-K.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Gentlemen, as you know of me for the past two years, that I've been in front of the council and in front of you, Mr. Buscaino, and also I've spoken to many of you regarding widening of the sidewalks. It's a bittersweet moment for me today, which this impasse where the city now wakes up that understands the dilemma that I was facing. For two years, I've been stopped by every corner of every professional individual that the city had. I'm not going to give names today, I don't want to embarrass no one, I've spoken to individuals. I need the help. First of all, the project is a dead end, where with private money, I tried to do the right thing, to widen the sidewalks, to make it handicap accessible, public rightway, and outside dining, yet this city, my district at least, who is our's office, and rest of the, let's say, the pyramid that was around him, and including an individual by DeLijani, they stopped the project. I don't know what to do next. Where it didn't need a $1.4 billion lawsuit today to all of you to sit today and lecture, at least me and the rest of the Angelinos, what should we do? I've been asking. I've been walking around with a tin can as a beggar. I haven't taken one penny for this project from anyone except to do the right thing for the Angelinos and to that alley, which today I want to make a disclosure. I do not represent the owners anymore. I do not represent the businesses anymore, but I do represent myself as a handicap individual, and I'm going to continue this project, and I'm going to see it through with the help of this committee to go forward. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that's our final speaker. Thank you to all, on behalf of Mr. Kukorian and our committee members, to all of you who joined us here for our first of a few presentations. We're going to take this on the road and hit all corners of the city. We know this is an important issue, it's been long overdue, and look forward to continuing this discussion. I encourage others, as we visit your part of the city, to attend and speak on this important issue. We'll continue this item, and also neighborhood councils working with Gracie Lou, she is going to blast out the meetings, and we are encouraging all neighborhood councils to submit community impact statements on this report as we move forward. So with that, thank you, Mr. Kukorian, and thank you to our colleagues who have joined us here, and we'll see you at the next one. Thank you. This meeting is now adjourned.